Call your wives?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Howland?
Here.
Humphrey?
Here.
Mines?
Here.
Price?
Here.
Sorenson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Mayor Powell?
Here.
Representative Ireland?
Here.
Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We may have called you. Yeah, that was easy. Sorry about that, a little mechanical problem here. Now, next item is minutes. We have minutes from noon meeting and also the regular scheduled meeting. All in favor? I'm sorry, I need a motion. I am trying. Motion to second to approve both sets of minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope. Motion carries. Next item is adoption of the agenda. John, Mike, any changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and second it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope. Motion carries. Item five is visitors to be heard. Addressing the council. Persons addressing the council shall use the microphone at the podium. Please raise your hand to be recognized, go to the podium, and state your name and address. For items that are not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard on any topic not on the agenda. Remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. For agenda items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item. Public testimony will then be closed and the topic will be given to the governing body for possible action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda unless a council member moves to allow another person to speak and there's unanimous consent from the council. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the presiding officer at any time. At this time, we have a proclamation and, let's see. Catherine, read. Catherine, read.
Proclamation for the Prudential Spirit of Community Award recipient. Whereas the city of Vermillion and its vitality as a place to live and work is influenced by the relationship of families, friends, and neighbors, and whereas strengthening the bonds of a community is in the hearts of people, the individuals who volunteer to help people of all ages, races, and religions cope with illness, overcome hardships and barriers, adjust to social changes, and fulfill their potential. And whereas these volunteers are typically the unrecognized unsung heroes of our society. And whereas the Prudential Spirit of Community Award represents the United States' largest youth recognition program based solely on volunteer service. And whereas all public and private middle-level and high schools in the country, as well as Girl Scout councils, county 4-H organizations, American Red Cross chapters, YMCA's, and hands-on network affiliates were eligible to select a student or member for a local Prudential Spirit of Community Award. And whereas these selected local honorees were reviewed by an independent judging panel which selected state honorees and distinguished finalists based on criteria including personal initiative, effort, impact, and personal growth. And whereas Annalise Taggart, a junior at Vermillion High School, was recently named one of the two Dakota, South Dakota honorees for the 2017 Prudential Spirit of Community Award program. And whereas Ms. Taggart exemplifies the values of the Vermillion community and volunteer community service. And whereas students like Ms. Taggart represent the best of America's youth and our role models to their peers and their fellow community members of all ages. Now, therefore, we, the governing body of the city of Vermillion, South Dakota, on behalf of all Vermillion residents and visitors, wish to extend our sincere appreciation and commend Annalise Taggart, our Prudential Spirit of Community Award honoree, for her outstanding volunteer contribution to others in our community. And therefore, in honor of this achievement, we proclaim this day as the Annalise Taggart Prudential Spirit of Community Recognition Day in Vermillion, South Dakota, dated in Vermillion, South Dakota, the sixth day of March 2017.
Thank you, Kelsey. And Annalise, if you would forward. Can you see it better?
Thank you. I was just saying thank you all, it's such an honor and definitely very, very appreciated, but thank you again for everything.
Our second proclamation is proclamation on Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. And Catherine, please, if you agree to that.
Proclamation of Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Whereas individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, their families, friends, neighbors, and coworkers encourage everyone to focus on the abilities of all people. And whereas the most effective way to increase this awareness is through everyone's active participation in community activities and openness to learn and acknowledge each individual's contribution. And whereas opportunities for citizens with intellectual and developmental disabilities to function as independently and productively as possible must be fostered in our community. And whereas we encourage all citizens to support opportunities for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities in our community, including full access to education, housing, employment, and recreational activities. And whereas individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities deserve nothing less. Now, therefore, we, the governing body of the city of Vermillion, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2017 as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Vermillion, South Dakota, and call upon the residents of this great city to join in observing this month by hosting and supporting initiatives and activities that support and promote providing employment opportunities for people with disabilities. Dated at Vermillion, South Dakota, this sixth day of March 2017.
Thank you, Catherine. Do you want to go receive the proclamation?
Yeah. Thank you for recognizing Disability Awareness Month. We appreciate your support in everything you do. Thank you.
It would be all right to say one thing. I just wanted to invite all of you and the entire Vermillion community to next Tuesday, we're hosting an open house at Sezdeck, and it's a great opportunity for us to share what we do at Sezdeck and the impact that we feel that we make in the community and just to open our doors and share a little bit more about what is happening in people's lives. So we appreciate if you have time to stop by. So thank you and appreciate your support.
Next, our public hearings. And Mike, retail on-off sale wine and retail on-off sale malt beverage license for D&amp;D Foods, Inc. from Hartford State Company Tavern at 7 Court Street. Mike, please.
Applications are received for retail on-off sale wine and malt beverage licenses from D&amp;D Foods, Inc. for Hartford State Company Tavern at 7 Court Street. The notice of hearing and police chief's report on the applicants are included in the packet. The retail on-off sale malt beverage licenses for the licensing period ending June 30th, 2017, while the retail on-off sale wine license licensing period would end December 31st, 17. The city council has the ability to issue licenses on basically two criteria, the suitable person and suitable location. As to suitable person, D&amp;D Foods listed two stockholders. Todd Friesy was listed as owning 51% of the stock, and the DCI background check was completed and is included in the, made reference to in the police chief's report with respect to suitable location criteria. Licenses have previously been issued at this location, and there's also two licenses issued, one on either end of the block. The, as the occupancy permit has not been issued by the building official, as it's still in the process of being remodeled, is recommended that any license being issued be contingent upon the occupancy permit being issued by the building official. The licensing fees have been paid. The wine license is $500, which is retained by the city, and the malt beverage license is 300, of which 150 is retained by the state. Following any input from the public hearing, the city council will be asked to make a decision on approval or denying the licenses. If they're approved, they should be contingent upon the occupancy permit. If motion's made to deny, the reason needs to be included. I think the owners, Todd and Diane, are here if you have questions.
This is a public hearing, so if you would like to say something, you may. It's not required. Thank you for coming to our community.
Yeah, we, we're looking forward to a real good opportunity here in the city. Don't know if any of you have ever been to the Hartford Steakhouse, but that's pretty much.
Prime rib night.
Yeah, exactly, Jack. Yeah. I think there's some relation there that is really good customers of ours in Hartford. So the plan is to, you know, basically repeat in Vermillion what we're doing in Hartford. So we think the community needs something like this. Both my self and wife Diane are graduates of USD. Couple of familiar faces up here at the table tonight, and we look forward to the opportunity. So we would appreciate the approval.
Thank you, Todd.
You bet.
And Diane. Comments or questions from the council? Tom?
Thanking the contingency on the occupancy permit and approval of the license.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the license with the contingency on the receiving of the.
Occupancy permit from the building official.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nope. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Goodbye.
Thank you.
Your new business, item A, presentation of 2016 annual financial report. And Mike, please.
The unaudited annual financial report was included in your packet. If you want a hard copy, so it's easier to follow, I do have extra ones, or if you need one, let me know, I can sure get you one. The state statute requires the annual report represented to the city council by the first meeting in March. The report as presented is unaudited. The city has a contract with the firm of Williams &amp; Company to audit the financial statements. Prior to the audit, we'll complete the introductory section, management discussion, and analysis. Footnotes and statistical section required as part of the comprehensive annual financial report. I've included a couple pages of information about the annual report in there. I can go over just some brief highlights. Exhibits one and two on five and seven are, pages five and seven are the government-wide financial statements. These two exhibits present the financial statements similar to what a business entity would, listing all the assets, depreciation, receivables, payables for the governmental Exhibit one on page five, the statement of net position, reports the city has over 111 million of assets and deferred outflows of resources, over 22 million, or 32 million of liabilities and deferred inflows of resources, leaving a net position of 78 million. Compared to 2015, we were just over 76 million, thus we've had an increase of 1.7 million in our net position. That, if you were looking at it as a business, would be your net income or your earnings to stockholders or whatever, so we were positive there. Page seven shows our statement of activities, listing columns there with expenses, operating and capital grants, charges for goods and services. The governmental activities net position increased just over a million, while the business activities net position increased 693,000, which comes to that 1.7 increase. Also in the last column in both them exhibits is the Housing Redevelopment Authority. The city council appoints all the board members of that. Development Authority in essence created it, so they determined since you can impose all of your will on it, you have to be reported as a component unit as part of our financial statements.
Could I ask you a question, just as, no, I don't want you to read the whole thing. I'm just curious on that one. Expenses are shown as a positive number, and so are the next two columns, and yet you subtract the two and three from one.
Yep, that is the way, yeah.
I'm not an accountant, so I'm just curious.
That is their new reporting way, is it starts with expenses.
As a positive number.
Uh huh. And yet you run the math, just like you said, you subtract your expenses, but the way they've got it worked out there is just a little different for governmental accounting.
So laypeople don't know what you're doing.
Yeah, they try to make it that way, I think.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
They've taken what was fairly straightforward, usually top, you have your revenues, and you subtract your expenses, and get that, you work your way across with expenses first.
Thank you.
Exhibit three on page eight shows your governmental funds. Starts off with the general fund, and then it lists what would be considered major funds. These are funds that have over 10% of the government assets, liabilities, revenues, or expenditures, or 5% of the entity's total assets, liabilities, revenues, or expenditures. So our second penny, sales tax fund is a major fund, and another one this year would be the Prentice Park improvements, with the bond issue there and all the expenses with building the pool and pool facilities in Prentice Park, their expenditures exceeded that threshold. And then the other governmental funds shown in the fourth column are the remaining 15 funds that are reported further back on pages 24 and 25, listing the governmental assets. Exhibit 3A on page nine reconciles the governmental fund balance sheet. On page nine with, or on page eight with what was shown on exhibit one on page five, ties them two together with the items that, for true governmental accounting, doesn't recognize assets, doesn't recognize debt, doesn't have prepaid expenses, doesn't have accrued expenses, and then the other is, the new reporting model has to show the South Dakota retirement system, the percentage of pension that is allocated to the city. Exhibit four on page 10 shows your revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds, the same major funds, the remaining 15 individual funds found on pages 26 and 27. Exhibit 4A on page 11 reconciles the change in fund balance, shown on page 10, with that shown on the statement of activities in 11, recognizing inventories, expenditures for capital assets, less depreciation, repayments of long-term debt, also the issuance of bonds wouldn't be considered an income, prepaid expenses. We go on back to exhibits five, six, and seven are for our proprietary or business-type funds, electric water, wastewater, liquor, golf course, and joint powers. Page 13 is the essence statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in position, or more like an income statement. The operating incomes, the golf course and the joint powers did not show operating income. They had some losses. The golf course was 215,000. The joint powers, 141. Golf course is somewhat attributable to the season you have out there, which can fluctuate from year to year. The landfill is the recycling markets and some of the expenses at the landfill, but our other ones are showing income. The last column on the far right is our internal service funds, which is our equipment replacement fund, our copier fax postage fund, our unemployment fund, are listed as internal service. They provide services to other city departments, so they really, they're kind of a creature of our own where we're charging costs off to them.
Mike, the joint powers landfill, is that just Vermillion's?
That's just Vermillion's portion.
Thank you.
And so once Yankton gets theirs done, we can kind of bring them together to see how we both did. Exhibits eight on page 16 shows the budget versus actual for our general fund. General fund revenues were 52,000 below budget. The far right-hand column, about a third of the way down, expenses were 466,000 under budget. The other very significant is our transfers out. We had budgeted transfer money out to the Prentice Park pool for that construction. Based on where they're at, I only transferred enough money out to cover what had been expended on the pool, so that was 809,000 below what we'd budgeted to transfer. Will most likely be coming with a revised budget to transfer that out in 2017 because we have the contracts and such for the pool. So really, other than outside of the pool, you know, the general fund ended up adding to its fund reserves about 443,000. Part of that is the, also is the state transportation money that's available for street projects that the state used to hold on to. Last year, they started and they sent that money to us, so now we get it and apply it to the projects. We used a little bit on engineering for the main street signals, part of the rest of that project, if it gets done this year, would come out of that money there, too. Page nine shows the budget versus actual on the second penny, sales tax. The revenues were 64,000 under budget, expenses were 128,000 under budget, same there, again, the transfers out. I just transferred out enough to cover what was needed for the pool project, for what we had expended in 16, and will most likely need to adjust that again in 17. I didn't think there's a need to transfer the money into the pool fund, just to let it set there in December when we're not going to have major expenditures till later on in the year. The pool fund on exhibit 10 shows where we're at, budget versus actual there on that project. The, shows where our actual ending fund balance is negative, but we are holding a retainage. 10% of the project is held as retainage, and also we had engineering fees that he wasn't going to bill us till the end of the project of 200 and some thousand that we owe. So that 626,000 is money that we owe contractors that wouldn't be paid till the end of the project. Exhibit 11 lists the city depositories, the city funds. We also have the library, board funds are listed here. They've got accounts of their own. We've also got some reserve funds, the city hall debt service reserve. We had sold bonds for an advance refunding that will refund the original issue here later this year. And then we got the electric transmission line where First National Bank is holding them reserves. The rest of the statements there list the individual funds, revenues and expenses, or assets, and then revenues and expenses for the 15 non-major governmental funds. It also lists budget versus actual for the special revenue and capital projects fund. And then 33, 34, 35 lists the balance sheet for the internal service funds, coming up with the totals there. I rambled on for quite a while. Is there any other questions, or if you do think of some holler, if you've got information that you want to ask about the report, sure, try to answer any questions.
Mike, I'm impressed with you and your office's work all the time. Year after year, do this. How would you summarize year over year from 16 over 15? If you, just as a general statement?
I think 16 was very similar to 15. Probably the last thing I didn't bring up is the new Gatsby 68 requires the city to report its share of the South Dakota retirement systems, net assets or net liabilities. In 2000, and their year ends June 15th, so the report adds June 15th, and then we got to report deferred inflows or outflows making up the difference for the six months. In June 30th, 15, South Dakota retirement system was funded 104%, so the city had to book a net pension asset of 1.2 million. That was on last year's financial statement. June 30th, 16, we were 96.89% funded, so reported, now we've got a liability of 971,000. So we had a swing of about 2.2 million showing up on our financial statements for what is the South Dakota retirement system.
I don't know, I think the legislature has passed all three of those bills. I don't know if the governor signed them yet or not, but what they're doing is they're reducing the interest rate on future monies. To be a little more realistic, they've been using like about seven and a half percent, which is pretty aggressive, and so that's why we were at 104% with the state retirement. I think this is accurate. So if they cut it back to seven, that's why we're now back at about 90%. So it's not an out-of-pocket cost, but it's, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think last year we showed what would be kind of considered a net income of like about 4.4 million. This year, 1.7. If you take out what the impacts of South Dakota retirement system, we were about the same.
Okay. And then Gatsby 34, is that an old one, then?
Yes, that's an older one. That moved to this new reporting format where expenses and then incomes give you by different categories.
Comments? Tom?
I'm curious, as I understand it, once we acknowledge, receive this, and it gets published in the newspaper, our official paper, when you send this then to the Department of Legislative Audit, they get a copy, is that about the same time then that we send it to the firm that's going to do the auditing? And, so that's one question. They go at the same time, and then the other, given that it's Do they go at the same time and then the other, given that it's tax time now? Do you know what the timeline on the audit might be?
Okay, I'll start the first question. I got 30 days after the council accepts this to publish it and file a copy with the Department of Legislative Audit. So we've, I've already got the one ready to go to the paper and got a pretty good start on what's needed to send to Department of Legislative Audit. They've got their account numbers, they want included in all of the columns which we don't put in our audit report or whatever, so I've just got to go add their account numbers on them so they can compare Vermillion to Mitchell by using their account numbers. As to the audit, Williams and Companies usually here the third or fourth week in April to start on their audit corresponding to when tax time gets done. They usually bring in a staff of five or six people, spend about a week, then they'll be back in their office working on pulling stuff together for their reporting, usually through the month of May, and then we're kind of finalizing it in June.
Okay, now thank you, I appreciate that. Any other questions for Mike? Again, thank you in your office for the good work you do, and we need a motion.
Motion to second to approve the presentation of 2016 annual financial report.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thanks, Mike. Item B, resolution authorizing the purchase of a water department forklift. Jose, what's the score?
They're losing by four, status.
Is that all?
Yeah. It's better than 11. The equipment replacement fund had scheduled in 2018 to replace the 1998 forklift from the water department. The existing forklift has been experiencing some brake problems coupled with the accelerator sticking, so it's a bad combination all around. The recommendation to replace a forklift is based on the estimated cost of the repairs, the service life of the equipment, and the scheduled replacement date, which would be next year. Administration contacted several for, or a couple forklift vendors in the area and found a 2015 Heister S50 CT forklift with 13 hours being sold by MH Equipment from T., South Dakota. The forklift is being sold at the discounted price of $19,800. Staff has had planned, as mentioned earlier, to purchase this piece of equipment in 2018. At that time, we were expecting to spend roughly $19,000 on a forklift. Although this purchase, as you can tell, was not planned for this year, we have seen quite a few significant savings in other purchases this year, so we are very comfortable in the fund absorbing this additional cost this year without any revisions to be done later on during budget revision time of the year. The existing forklift will be declared surplus and appraised the following agenda item. With all that being said, administration recommends approving the resolution to purchase a 2015 Heister S50 CT forklift for $19,800 from MH Equipment from T., South Dakota.
Questions for Jose? Motion to second to approve the resolution authorizing the purchase of a water department forklift. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Thank you. Okay, then on to the second part, declaring a forklift surplus, again, Jose.
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is the second part. So now that we're going to be replacing the forklift, now we're going to be declaring the surplus, the existing forklift surplus and then pricing it. So this portion here will be declaring it surplus, and again, it's a 1998 Toyota forklift. Once it's declared surplus and we would like the surplus property appraisal committee to meet and appraise the forklift at $2,300. This would be once we sell it, if we were to sell it for 90% of that appraised value, then it would be roughly $2,100. We do have the vendor that is selling us the piece of equipment has said that he would be purchased, he could purchase it from us for that price, although what we're actually going to be trying to do is sell it on the open market so we can get a higher value for it. So at least we have a backup. We were planning on selling it, as far as equipment replacement fund, the value of it at the time was actually $500, so $2,100 is quite a lot more than we were planning on getting for it once it was sold. But we're, we think we can actually get closer to $4,000, $5,000 for it. With all that being said, the sale proceeds obviously are going to be going to the equipment replacement fund. Administration recommends declaring the forklift surplus and moving forward with appraisal by the surplus property appraisal committee for the forklift.
Thank you, Jose. Questions for Jose? Motion to second to declare forklift surplus. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Jose. Item nine, fuel quotes, Mike?
Hopefully sitting in front of you, I guess on the screen too, are the fuel quotes. First, stern oil for unleaded gasoline, 10% ethanol, $2.228 per gallon. Bid item two is 3,000 gallons of number one and number two diesel fuel dyed, the blended cost $1.9159. Item three is 1,000 gallons of number one and number two diesel fuel clear blended cost or the average cost is $2.21.24 cents per gallon. Brunnick service on item one is $2.04. Item two, $1.84. Item three, $1.23.5 cents per gallon.
Two dollars.
Two dollars, sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, we'll take that.
The low bid then would be stern oil on one and three and brunick on two.
Okay, council? Motion to second to approve the low bids. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item B is LED streetlights. Shane, please.
Thank you. Last year, the city began to convert the city's streetlights over to a more efficient and a longer-lasting LED system. This year, we continue to, continue converting the streetlights in the residential areas and in addition to that, we plan to replace the Cherry Street with LED lights. City opened bids for the lights on March 1st. There's a copy of the bid summary, it's been attached for you guys to review. Bids were requested on two different styles of LED lights. Proposal one was for the post-top lights, which could be found in most of our residential areas, while proposal two was for a Cobra Head or a roadway lighting which is found along state routes like Cherry Street, Stanford. The city received three bids for proposal one and two bids for proposal two. The low bid for proposal one was received from Erby Utilities in the amount of $401 per light for a total of $48,120. The low bid for proposal two was received from Wesco in the amount of $525 per light for a total of $73,500. 2017 Electrical Distribution Fund includes funding for these purchases. Administration recommends awarding proposal one to Erby Utilities in the amount of $48,120 and awarding proposal two to Wesco in the amount of $73,500.
Thank you. A motion to second to approve low bids. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Quick question?
Sure.
Aside from, I know Cherry Street's former Highway 50 and then we have a bypass etc. What other streets in Vermillion are state streets?
I believe it's Stanford.
Actually, Highway 19 from between Cherry and Highway 50 and the bypass, that would be a state road and then Cherry Street.
Where it's 45 miles an hour, I mean.
I don't think it's 45.
35. From Cherry to, to the bypass is. Anyway, I didn't know if that was actually state or federal.
It's state.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no federal roads, I guess, so.
All right.
Jose, while you're up, why don't we do the chip seal?
Thank you.
For 17.
I guess this is that time of year where we do the chip sealing bid. You guys may know, chip sealing is pretty much a process where we, it's a two-step process where we try and extend the life of the asphalt roads in town by applying chip seals. The two-step process, first of all, the roads get cleaned and so forth, and then we come back and put oil on the roads, oil. That's the first step. The oil would just seal the cracks and any voids within the existing asphalt. And then the second step, we come back and put quartzite chips, usually about an eighth of, of an inch in size, and the chips protect the oil from UV radiation and that'll also give it a surface with better traction and so forth. Bids were open on this project on February 22nd, 2017. We received two bids. The low bid was from Top Coat of Yankton in the amount of $86,454.98, while the high bid came in at $97,470.40. Bid specifications were sent to four potential bidders in the area. Bidding is required for any project that's estimated to exceed $50,000. Our estimate for this project was $105,000, so that's why we sent bid proposals. The contract that this, the contract actually calls out for the project to be completed August 1st or August 11th, 2017 and commencing no earlier than July 1st, I think it is, June or July 1st. We need that time for the, for the project to start so we can actually get ahead and start crack sealing and so forth. So that's why we have a little bit of a time and then we usually pick a date probably about a week or so before school starts, so the roads are traversable for the, the school bus and USD students and so forth. So the street department budgeted for the annual chip seal project on the second penny sales tax, funds, street construction and asphalt overlays, line item. Administration recommends awarding the contract to Top Coat for the amount of $86,454.98. Before you guys do a motion, I do have a map that shows, I thought it would come in a little bit better, but, that shows that the streets that were actually going to be chip sealed. We have Duke Street, this little dot right there would be City Hall for reference in USD. Dartmouth from Franklin all the way to North Dakota. We have High Street from the 4H grounds all the way to National. Prospect all the way from Dartmouth to National. We have West End, we have Summer, we have Clark Street from Dakota all the way to Plum. We have Pine from Maine to Cherry. We have Cedar from Yale to Plum. We have Duke Street from Plum to Jefferson. We have Anderson Street. We have Sycamore, Ash, and Sunset. So this is actually quite a lot more roads to chip seal than we did last year and probably from a while back, to be honest with you. So this is a pretty good step forward, I guess, so.
Thanks, Jose. A motion to second to approve the 2017 chip seal project. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you. City manager, John, please.
Thank you. Once again, we're trying to put together an application for paint South Dakota. That's a project that'll take place in June and basically we're seeking two things. One is a volunteer group to paint a house and the second is a house. The house must be a single family owner occupied home in need of painting and the owner should be physically or financially unable to paint the house. Eligible homeowners or volunteer groups are asked to contact the city so that Vermillion could apply to be one of these 25 locations around the state. The public library, Edith B. Segretz Vermillion Public Library has expanded their hours. They now open at 8:00 AM Monday through Friday. The closing times on their respective days do remain the same. And then earlier today, the city council had a chance to look at the vote tally for the Prentice Park, the pool, new pool in Prentice Park. A couple weeks ago, there were a number of names that the council narrowed down to four options and then the public had an opportunity to vote. We had 459 votes that were cast and the name of the new pool at Prentice Park is Prentice Plunge. We're excited to have a name for this new facility. This pool's going to offer a lot of great amenities for our community. It's more than just, if you will, the old-fashioned swimming pool. There's a zero-depth entry area, there are two slides which are pretty visible, the water walk, lazy river, there's this play structure for smaller children, there'll be a lap swim area, a basketball hoop in the four-foot section of water, a diving board and more complete concessions than what we've had. So these improvements with the pool as well as the new basketball court, so it'll be constructed later this year. The last year made some, the last couple of years made some improvements to the baseball field and the amphitheater around there. They're really enhancing the value of Prentice Park and the opportunities for our community. So with that, I guess we welcome Prentice Plunge to our community.
Thank you, John. Any questions for our city manager? Seeing none. Invoice is payable. Stump mic time. Any questions on any item that we're paying bills?
Question, I, can you tell me on number 192, it says Clay County Treasurer Storm Water Fee, $9,777. So we're paying Clay County $9,777? Is that, what is that?
Yes, we are paying. That is the city's storm water fee. It goes on all the tax statements based on square footage area and runoff factor. We pay that in and they're turned around and reimburse it to us. It's for allocating, the file that's sent to them has all of the properties in the city on it, including the city's properties, and so it comes back.
Okay, that, thank you for explaining.
It's a little cumbersome, but it seems to work better for all the parties involved getting, not having to try to take properties out of the parcel, which then doesn't tie with the counties. They think they're missing some and we think we're missing some, so.
Okay, smart accounting there.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Counsel? Seeing none. Okay. Motion to second to pay our bills. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. I'm going to assume that was a majority. We have a consensus agenda, set a public hearing date of March 20th, 2017 for a special daily malt beverage and wine license for the Vermillion Area Arts Council on or about April 1, 2017 at 202 Washington Street. Motion to second to approve the consensus agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. I don't know if we can adjourn.
I think we can find a way.
Okay.
When will we adjourn?
Motion to second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you.